Hey there, girl.
Yes, for the mission. Great. Alright, let's sort of do the agenda and make sure if there's any questions. Alright. We'll start off with the pledge and invocation. I'll read the ethics reminder. We'll take a public comment. Then we'll approve the consent agenda. And are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Alright. Following that, we have a proclamation of November as adoption awareness month. And Joe Belcher will, Commissioner Belcher will present that proclamation. Following that, we have a congratulations to Rashida McDaniels. And Commissioner Jethro B. will help us out with that. Following that, we have a public hearing on an amendment to the county personnel ordinance. On the county manager's report, we did have a plan to do a presentation on the aging plan, but Ms. Cleo is not feeling well and won't be presenting that tonight. So we'll reschedule that. Alright. The next item is a report on Buncombe County's financial health. And Tim Flora will lead that presentation. Following that, we have under new business, we have a consideration of a conservation easement funding request, resolution amending the rules and procedures for the Board of County Commissioners, to end a proposal on tax department reorganization. We also want to add one additional item under new business, which I believe all the commissioners are aware of. And that is a resolution accepting an offer to purchase county properties located at 125 South Lexington Avenue. So if there's no objection, we'll add this to the agenda for consideration at this meeting. And Michael Free will explain that item. Finally, under board appointments, we have Health and Human Services Board, one position. Jennifer Cartlow has been recommended by the HHS Executive Committee. There's also one other applicant that we can also consider. We've got an appointment to Civic Center Commission. And then we have some announcements. Are there any questions about any item on the agenda? Okay, great. And for the folks who are here with us this evening, we will have the general public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And anyone's welcome to speak at that time. But we will take separate public comment on a number of the items on our agenda. And I'm going to list the items that we are planning on taking a public comment on specifically. So if you're interested in one of these items, you might want to wait and make your comments at that time. So the items that we plan to take additional public comment on are the personnel ordinance proposed changes, the conservation easement funding, the county commission rules and procedures, and the tax department reorganization. So if you're interested in any of those items, you might want to just wait. We'll take public comment on those when we get to them. Alright, I think we're ready to go. So Max, if you could start the introductory video. Good evening. I'd like to call the November 7th, 2017, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, our nation, our ally, and the people of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
This Saturday, as we do each year on November 11th, our nation will observe Veterans Day. This is a day set aside to honor and thank all Americans who have served in the United States armed services. Veterans Day also coincides with Armistice Day, celebrating the day and the time, 11:00 a.m., of the armistice between Germany, France, Great Britain, and the United States and other nations that brought World War I to an end. This Saturday is the 99th anniversary of the end of one of the most horrible wars in human history. As we approach this Veterans Day, let's take time to thank those who have served our country. There will be a Veterans Day ceremony at the Charles George VA Medical Center here in Asheville this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. The keynote speaker will be Nicholas Rohr, a former Marine, Vietnam veteran, and author. The public is invited to attend. And let's also take a moment to thank the veterans and our families and our neighborhoods and workplaces. In that spirit, I would like to take a moment to thank the veterans that we have who serve on this Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Mike Fryer and Commissioner Al Whitesides both served our country in the United States Navy. So I would like to thank Commissioner Fryer and Commissioner Whitesides for your service to our country. And are there any other veterans who were with us who are in the commission chambers this evening? Let's thank you for your service. So let's thank all of our veterans this Saturday and throughout the year for their service and sacrifice to our country. Now, before we begin our meeting, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor our veterans and their service to our country. People may offer a silent prayer of thanks for our veterans and their families. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And finally, before we begin our meeting, I would also like to, on behalf of the county commission, extend a happy birthday to Billy Graham, who is celebrating his 99th birthday this year, and to wish, to send good wishes to him and the Graham family. Alright, thank you all for being with us. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. If there is any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact. Is there any item on the agenda which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? Seeing none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all items that we vote on this evening. Alright, we now come to public comment. Let me just share our policies on public comment. If you want to comment, please share your name and where you live. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager, Mandy Stone. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is the public's chance to speak to us. And the board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that's been previously presented to the board during the same meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Alright, we'll start over here and we'll go down the road this way and then we'll work our way back. So you make it first.
Hi, my name is Leila Fisters. I am a junior high school student at Inca High School, and I live in the Inca Camar district. I'm here today to talk about the 100% renewable energy. And for me, it's personal, but it's also fact-based. So when you look at the economic impact that it takes, so I have here a study that was done on 10 cities in the U.S. And I have Burlington, Vermont as one study that I thought was pretty similar to Asheville. And the Burlington Electric Manager of Power Resources stated that the transition in thought from 2004 to 2008 was from "we want to do this" to "this actually makes economic sense for us to do this." But ultimately, city officials, it came down to economics where a shift to renewable energies was the cheapest risk. Burlington estimates it will save $20 million over the next 20 years by moving away from fossil fuels, and customers have seen a direct benefit. Now, when we look at Duke Energy and the coal ash that has caused our rates to raise, and the environmental impact that we couldn't see 10 years out from coal and the renewable resources, has a less of a impact on our environment and economy because of that. Because of the coal ash, plus this money, and renewable energies are more reliable. So for me, it's economic as well as personal, because I'm living in it. I'm growing up in it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kate Rogers. I'm attending Charles D. Owen High School in the Swanonaw. And I'm the president of my school's green team, and I have a passion for sustainability. Renewable energy is a huge step towards a more sustainable future that my generation is working towards. I am confident those in my age group feel similarly. Fifty or more of the students, of our students attended this seminar at my school hosted by Duke Energy and Brownie Newman to work on implementing solar at our school or local angles. After their presentation, there were amazing questions for the speakers, and the students were deeply interested. In the excited atmosphere, you could feel how pumped people were at the concept of reducing our impact on this world. With climate change looming over our heads and how quickly we are depleting our resources, this is, it is crucial that we look towards alternative options. This is the Asheville area. If we don't set the example, we will. Renewable energy is the future, our future. Moving away from fossil fuels is inevitable, and I, for one, would deeply appreciate that start.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Elias Garn. I attend Asheville High, but I am in the Reynolds District. Asheville's future is at stake, and I want to see that future secure for me and future generations. When the United States National Government pulled from its support for the Paris Climate Agreement, responsibility of tackling the issue of climate change was handed to the people. And we, the people, chose to elect representatives that would serve our community in government, and that is you. Now, we can't depend on the national government anymore, so it's time to take steps on a local level. I'm not going to go into the science of climate change. I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with this. And we're all very familiar with the destruction that climate change is beginning to bring to our nation. Texas, Florida, Puerto Rico, that should be morning enough. I've had a very hard past year, and it's proven that every moment of your life is precious, and that you have to make an impact while you can, while you can, and while you're here. I've lost people in my life. Our Asheville community has lost people. Our nation has lost so many to tragedy after tragedy. You have to do everything you can to save the world, or the world's weak to you, too. And this is your opportunity to do so. What's important is making the biggest change you can for our community while you are here. And that's why we voted you into office, so that you can change our community in the way that we can't on our own. You won't be in this office forever, but while you are, make the change our community, nation, and world needs to see. Please, let's get Asheville on the path to a cleaner, safer, healthier future. Our health and livelihood depend on each and every member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Twyla Close. My address is 22 Riverbend Drive. And I am currently a senior at East Reynolds High School, and I would like to wish my support for the 100% renewable energy resolution. As a young person facing the threat of climate change, overreliance on non-renewable energy, I ask you to consider making our county a model community that may inspire other parts of the state and country to make similar changes in favor of renewable energy. The passage of this resolution would take a huge burden off of my generation and those to come. I think I stand with my peers in supporting the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, my name is Harmony Kunst. I live on 48 Hope Dale Circle in Buncombe County. I come from Irwin Middle School, and I currently attend Nesbit Discovery Academy. I believe that Buncombe County needs to vote yes on this county resolution because it's my future. Climate change is a fact, and what we do now is going to affect my life as an adult in Buncombe County. Renewable energy isn't just about preventing pollution, it's also about self-sustainability. If this county directly invests in the effort of renewable energy, we will not only benefit from cleaner air and water, but the county will also benefit from a long-term profit in which they can cut the cost of profiting fossil fuels, providing fossil fuels entirely. This plan will also provide jobs to the citizens of the county, which is just another benefit of the growing list. This is the future I want for the youth of Buncombe County, bright and sustainable. Every night, me and my dad watch the news. And we look at the natural disasters that happen on a daily basis, almost a daily basis. And sometimes it seems so hopeless, but when we can do something on a local level, it's so motivating, and I want to be able to help them. And I want you to be able to help them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sydney Tyson. I live at 8 Foxbury Drive in Arden, and I'm a senior at TC Robertson High School. I'm very passionate about protecting our environment, so much that I plan to focus my higher education on environmental engineering. As a young adult, I realize that decisions made today will have a direct impact not only on my generation, but the generations to come. As a county, shouldn't we be doing everything within our power to provide an ever-improving solution? We have already taken important steps towards a goal of 100% renewable energy, such as replacing the light bulbs in our schools to LEDs and placing a solar farm on the county's retired land. These and other steps that the county has already taken show a willingness to embrace environmental responsibility at a county-wide level. Increasing the supply of renewable energy will have a multitude of benefits. It will help replace carbon-intensive energy sources, address, reduce global warming emissions. As a result, our public health quality will improve with cleaner water. It will create more jobs, and the cost is already affordable and is expected to decrease. Renewable energy is also more reliable and resilient with the likelihood of extreme weather events that we have seen occurring because of global warming. I have grown up hearing about the environmental impact of climate change and unsustainable practices. Today, I see things that are being taken for granted being threatened. For example, we all love chocolate, and chocolate is made from the cacao bean, which is endangered from the unsustainable practices that are going on today. While here in Asheville, we don't grow cacao beans, but we do enjoy abundance of income from tourism and local businesses. For embracing the 100% renewable energy plan, our county will be showing its citizens, tourists, and potential business investors that we are serious about protecting our environment for all of those who enjoy it now and in the future. Buncombe County is a climate data hub, and as such, we should be leading the way in environmental responsible practices. Please vote yes for the 100% renewable energy plan and show your steadfast commitment to the environment, the local community, and to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Lang, and I'm a senior at TC Robertson High School. I live at 19 Drissin Circle in Arden. I want to begin by expressing how strongly I feel about protecting the environment and how it comes down to a simple idea. Nothing else matters if we don't have a planet to live on. I believe there should be a reconsideration to pass the 100% renewable energy plan over 10 years. I would just like to reiterate that in the next couple of years, we could already be 50% of the way towards our goal by installing a solar farm in the place of the old landfill and by switching all the lights in Buncombe County schools to fluorescent bulbs. Imagine, if this is 50% already, how easy it will be to get the rest of the way there. This plan did not pass the previous time it was voted on because of concern for the financial burden it would bring on future generations. And I do agree that there is a burden, but we're facing it right now. I know that as of January 1st, 2018, Duke Energy will be increasing the bills of North Carolina residents by 17%. This hike is because of the millions of dollars needed by the company to clean up the coal ash at the power plant at Lake Julian. They need this money to transport the waste from Asheville to a site in Georgia. This is the burden that will fall onto me and many other residents in the area. I believe that there would be no burden by switching to renewable energy. And North Carolina has so much potential for it, too. The North Carolina coast has unlimited potential in offshore wind energy. Schools have enormous flat roofs, which can be used for solar panels, and buses could even be converted to electric. These once unimaginable ideas are now realistic because of the new technologies being developed. Renewable energy has no toxic byproduct like burning fossil fuels does. They do not develop, they do not dump heavy metals or CO2 into the atmosphere, which pollute the air and water. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Alright, anyone in the first row on the second row? Alright, go to the second row on the side.
Hello, my name is Zachary Hudson. I live in South Asheville at 8 Downwood Lane, and I'm representing TC Robertson High School today. The primary goal of a school system is to prepare for the future. To fully prepare for the future, renewable energy is vital. On behalf of the environmental group at TC Robertson, we fully support the 10-year renewable energy plan. Solar panels have proven to pay back the initial investment within four to 20 years, making solar a cost-effective solution. School system's second-largest expense is energy, second only to salaries. And by investing in clean and renewable energy, money will be saved, allowing for increased funding to other aspects of school. Additionally, schools have large open roof space, which is perfect for solar panels. TC Robertson alone has about 15,000 square meters of roof space. Although not all of the roof is available for solar panel installation, the majority is. The flat roofing with no interruption of sunlight allows for maximum exposure to the sun, and TC Robertson could produce up to 30 million kilowatt-hours per year of energy just using solar. Additionally, energy production coincides with school activity as the lights and computers are running during the day when students are present. By not having to store a lot of energy, solar energy will be more cost-effective and can easily meet the needs of the school. Once again, I'd like to reiterate our support for the 100% clean renewable energy bill. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Someone to the second row?
Hi, my name is James Smith. I'm a student at UNC Asheville, and I currently lead the fossil fuel divestment campaign there. And I'm also here representing Youth for Environmental Stewardship, which as it conceives a coalition of high schoolers and college students from around the Buncombe County area who are concerned about several things, including our energy production, because this is something, as people have stated before me, that affects all of us. And we need to, you know, put Asheville and the county in a position right now where we have the capacity to produce our energy in the future. Because, you know, the effects of climate change are only going to get worse. Fossil fuels are going to become increasingly stranded assets. And it's not a question of is this the right move? It's a question of how soon can we act and how do we act? And, you know, the resolution presented a few weeks ago wasn't answered to that question. And so as a member of Youth for Environmental Stewardship, or yes, I'm asking you to say yes to the resolution and say yes to us as, you know, the future of the economy and this county. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Wertz. I'm a senior at Oran Wilson College and grew up on Riceville Road and am remaining in Buncombe County for a long time. I am excited to be a part of the group as well, and they have spoken about most of the points that I'd like to talk about. I want to check out two more. Again, that burden, that financial burden, is something that we're going to continue to see as fossil fuels become more difficult to use. And we have to include health costs as an asthmatic. I think a lot about the health costs associated with contaminants, environmental contaminants. And so that's one thing I really want to think about. And it's our job as people who are paying taxes to know what those taxes go towards. And so that's one way, I think, that we could address having to fund project levels, is to help people understand that's where, that's one of the reasons that those taxes are going to be increased. And then one thing that I wanted to bring up was that, as Americans, we have a disproportionately high carbon footprint. And even the people who make the most environmentally friendly decisions just by being Americans and being a part of a society that has government services is still at the lowest, two times more impactful in their carbon footprint than the average for the rest of the world. And so the decisions that we make at a county level are really important because that is, on a government level, what is a big part of our individual carbon footprints and something that we can't necessarily control as individuals. And so that's why I really hope that you will reconsider that resolution and really prioritize our renewable energy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Perot, and I am a student journalist at UNCA. I write for the Blue Banner. And I was raised in Boy Scouts and as a veteran scout. And what I was taught when I was younger was to be prepared, be prepared for anything. And I would rather us invest in something that we can prepare for the future for. And if we keep investing in fossil fuels and coal, we're not only wasting money on cleaning up, but also health costs that affect each and every one of you and me and everybody in this room. That's in our drinking water, that's in our air, it's everywhere. And I'm going to keep this short and sweet, is just think about the future, and I would much rather pay to be proactive than reactive. Thank you very much.
Alright, anybody in the second, I think we're going to the second row on the side? Third row on the side? Okay, we're going to the third. Okay, I'm sorry, Lisa Baldwin. Okay, I'm sorry, Lisa Baldwin.
I'm Lisa Baldwin from Fairview. Chairman Newman and Commissioners, Buncombe County citizens have repeatedly sounded the alarm. We've asked for better budgetary oversight. We've tried to help you by researching and questioning specific expenditures in open meetings and sending emails, only to be ignored. Under your watch, top county employees received questionable raises and six-figure bonuses. The citizens who elected you to perform due diligence and oversight have been ignored as we have watched you give away millions of taxpayer dollars that don't support true needs. Case in point. Citizens asked for an investigation into former county manager Wanda Green's right-hand woman, Mandy Stone. Ms. Stone has worn two hats and received two salaries plus a six-figure bonus as the former Assistant County Manager and Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. Citizens expressed concern with her pet project, a $50 million DHHS building expansion and parking garage. Even more importantly, we have expressed concern over Mandy Stone's Department of Social Services and the families being torn apart. The mandate to reunify families has fallen by the wayside as the temptation to accept perverse financial incentives won out. These incentives pay $4,000 to $6,000 for removing a child from their family. In addition, the incentives to adopt these children rather than reunite them with their families pays as much as $85,000 to $100,000 to the adopted family. Just one year ago, a child in Mandy Stone's DSS care, Lila Pickering, was murdered. But instead of investigating these concerns, you promoted Mandy Stone to county manager. On October 10th, nearly a month ago, I sent a public records request to Ms. Stone, a simple request for the ordinance that created the six-figure bonuses. However, my October 10th public records request has gone unanswered by Mandy Stone. According to general statute, Stone is the rightful keeper of the public records, but she referred my request to attorney Michael Frue. This is an expensive alternative. As an attorney, I would imagine he makes at least $200 per hour. Today, neither Ms. Stone nor attorney Frue have responded to my request made almost one month ago. This could be a violation of the public records law. Mandy Stone, Wanda Green's right-hand woman, promoted to county manager even when citizens ask you to launch an investigation into Stone's questionable DSS practices. I ask you once again to be proactive, not reactive. Investigate DSS practices, get rid of the old guard, and do a national search, a legitimate search, for a new county manager. Tonight, you are forced to react by changing the rules and procedures put into place with a rubber stamp, a day late and more than a dollar short. Tomorrow, you have a choice. Will you be proactive? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can you hear me? Yeah, my name's Daniel Green, and I live at 67 Lees Creek Road across from Urban High School. Not high school students probably can see. But I do appreciate what they all said about the environment. And the funny thing about it is, is that had you all, every one of you, been a little bit more conscientious about watching over the, well, we just call them crooks since they're under federal investigation about this stuff that happened, that the US attorneys have to be around at. Don't give them the records. Don't give Ms. Baldwin the records. You just hide them, you just ignore it. Don't do that. The FBI doesn't play that way. They will come in with federal warrants, and they will get whatever they want. So y'all can play, but they don't kid around. But more to the point is, this has got to stop. This has got to stop. It's like every couple of years, there's some new scandal. A few years ago, it was Bobby Medford shaking down convenience stores, which, by the way, we haven't had the evidence room records revealed yet. Are you going to do that? Or does the fact that Ron Moore isn't the district attorney anymore, does his saying hide that, does that still carry weight? Because that's what City Council did when they had their evidence room looked at. Oh, don't show it, we can't have that, you know? What is everybody afraid of about that stuff? As to the financial irregularities, I spoke to Ms. Stone about this. What other things has she done besides the retention bonus? Because if you're going to steal in one area, you know, did Al Capone just bootleg whiskey? No, he did a whole lot of other stuff. They had to finally catch him in tax evasion. So what I'm saying is, I think what you need to do, because apparently everybody's integrity seems to be compromised, is you need to get an independent entity to audit every single financial transaction that she has been a part of since she was county manager and make that report public when it becomes available. Don't cover it up because, oh, the governor wants it hidden or something. I don't care if Jesus comes down and wants it hidden. Don't. Show it to everybody if you want to have any credibility. And I guess my time is up. Thank you.
Don Yelpin Jupiter. A little bit out of it, that's why I'm out of it, I'm from Jupiter. And I didn't come to speak in public comment. There's two issues on the agenda I want to speak on specifically. But I can't let this pass. I've always asked, back in Tom Sobel days, which if you look on the pictures out there, it was a long time ago, that the county checkbook be put on the internet as an Excel spreadsheet, check number, to whom, for what, the amount, and the line item of the budget that that check comes out of. That way, the public can monitor any particular area of interest they have. And I'm going to bring it up until I die or it's done. Now, as I look around in here, I'm probably one of the oldest in here. So we're going to have a little humor. Science always changes. The science of renewable energy is changing daily. It is not fixed. At my age of 70, I can remember, and Al, you may too, when wax on milk carts caused cancer. Remember that? I also remember when cranberry sauce was causing cancer. And I can also remember old rundown, beat-up Volkswagen's running around with bumper stickers. Split wood not addison. And if everybody in Asheville had split woods, we'd be worse than Maggie Valley in the wintertime at holiday. How many have been in Maggie Valley at Christmas time when everybody's got all those cabins full and they're all burning wood? A lot of people don't know Asheville had the first air pollution control system in the country. And you know what it was? A schedule to fire up the stoker furnaces. Because if they were all fired up at the same time, you couldn't breathe in downtown Asheville. And Al, you're shaking your head, you remember that? So we developed a schedule for when to fire up your furnace. Now, I want to know how this board can pass a resolution that's going to tell everybody in Buncombe County and all business that they got to have 100% renewable energy when you don't even know how much energy the county is using. To assume that you can do that, you just as well to realize what you're doing. You're not using science, you're using magic and emotion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone in the first three rows on this side? All right, go to the third row on this side. Anybody in the third row on this side wants to speak? Okay, if not, fourth row. Anybody on the fourth row on this side? Not whatever to the... Sure, you can go, and then you may follow.
Hello, thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Kathy Holt. I live in Asheville on Canalworth Road. And since I'm talking about where I live, I might like to mention that I am a climate, I was a climate refugee during Hurricane Irma. There was a tree from next door that was uprooted, pulled over by the wind, landed smack in the middle of my roof. And we had to be evicted on rather short notice for about 19 days until the landlord got it fixed. And to me, this is just a small taste of what is to come. Of course, Asheville has many advantages. We're located in places that are much safer from sea level rise and hurricanes and tornadoes and floods, usually speaking, than, say, Florida. But nevertheless, it is real. This is already upon us. How many times have you ever seen hurricanes that could go from letter H through letter, what was it? What did we finally end up with, a letter S or so? This is highly unusual, and we need to do what we can. I know that this county has many possibilities for how we can become renewable, how we can seriously decrease our carbon footprint. And I really strongly urge you commissioners to take seriously what these young people here have said so eloquently. They are concerned about their future. They know what's at stake. And it is up to us to really take those steps to make this new future that is really so promising in terms of both jobs, the economy, and human health. It's up to us to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to say something in this process before we get through the rest of this process because I see it's going to be in the energy department. But the part about our employees, I have to say something.
Our general policy is that this is in public mind. So I think that's an important policy, but it's Thursday, Saturday, so I'll give you, I'll make a short exception. Go ahead, Mr. Baldwin.
I would be more than happy to sit down with Lisa. I'd be more than happy to sit down with this gentleman. But we're not going to come up in this chamber and condemn employees and say that they're giving this away. Most of you don't even know what you're talking about at present time. We do. And we're sitting up here for one reason. I have been with Ms. Frost, she's on the other end of this table. And the fact is, there was many giveaways. The six figures, that's not giveaways, you know? But I am sorry that Ms. Stone or anyone in our staff has to listen to something like this because facts are facts. I read something last night, a year and a half ago. This was put out in the Tribune paper, June 9th, I think, of last year. It was written, I was seeing it last night. And I don't know where the facts are. It's just something that was written. Mr. Frue, you know, I'd be more than happy if a chairman, a lady, speak to the issues that Ms. Baldwin asked. But the fact is, stepping up here and saying stuff like that to the people in this chamber. Now, I'm here, I'm a commissioner, and I'm from your district. I don't know who the gentleman is, but I'm from his district. But if you'll come to me or come to Ms. Frost from our district, we've been out, we've talked to the TV, we've been on the radio talking about what Ms. Green did. And what she did was wrong, people, okay? But you can't take everybody, and you can't say somebody's the big buddy. I guess we're all big buddies for a while because we all listen to her. So I apologize to the people at cheer for other reasons, but as a commissioner, you have to defend the people that work for you. And she does work for us. Should we hire her? And I'm going to stay her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, moving back to public comment, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Lynn Moss. I'm from Leeville, Pennsylvania. I moved here three years ago from southwestern Pennsylvania, which I consider myself a natural gas fracking refugee because it became a dangerous safe area to live. So I applaud all these students here and these young adults and our future generations for coming up and saying they want a safe place to live because I moved here to be in a safe place. There's no, per the US Gas Shell Play Maps, there are no gas shells here. So there's no drilling, so I don't have to worry about one, which I don't have to worry that I have my, that I'm on the outside for 45 minutes exposure. I don't have to worry that my windows are open. And I don't have to worry that I can have outside vegetable gardens, which is what my restrictions were in Pennsylvania. On August 7th this year, we overshot our earth resources. We are now into 2018's resources, earth resources. So every day, we're using another day's worth of resources. My biggest concern has been already stated by what our young adults and future has said. But one of the other things is our safe water concerns. One gas well takes 1 million to 10 million gallons of fresh water, which is permanently toxic, with toxic chemicals. And those are injected into deep wells, which causes earthquakes and things. But the biggest concern I have is how much safe water will be there for the future. The other piece here that I am concerned about is using our timber for pellet energy in Europe. So in southeastern US, we are tearing down our forests to use for fuel. So 100% renewable, actually, which I would like to see reopened up and voted, takes away a lot of those concerns. One for family and friends still in the fracking zones and our future generations and our future ability to sustain life. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll get some more in there, we'll get you next. Go ahead, thank you.
I'm Morgan. 15 years since I've been here. I'd be glad I'm not on the board because I own the stores. And if you attack one of my employees like Mandy was attacked, I would throw me out here. Because whoever works for me is for me. You hired this girl, and I'm just glad I'm not the chairman because I'd ask you to leave.
All right, thank you. Yes, you're next.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Horton. Dr. Catherine Horton, I'm representing Community Roots, a local nonprofit and the statewide North Carolina Climate Solutions Coalition. We were surprised last meeting that this resolution didn't pass. The 25 of us or so who were here to speak in favor of it were surprised that there was not more support for it. So I'm wondering what it is that you all need to make this happen. If it's a matter of science, we've got plenty of science. The Climate Solutions Coalition is connected with Dr. Michael Mann, Dr. Mark Jacobson, some of the top climate scientists in the world. We can get them down here if that's what you need to hear. I sent you all today an email with a few resources that I think will be helpful, one of which is the Clean Path, North Carolina Clean Path 2025 Plan, which has come from NC Bourne, another one of our nonprofits. They've written a very detailed plan on how North Carolina can become 100% renewable. This is not an unknown. How we apply to Asheville and Buncombe County, yeah, there's some work to do and how to figure that out. But there's lots of resources out there. I also sent you a guide for governments on becoming 100% renewable. There's a lot more. I sent you a piece of software that is specifically designed for governments to help you figure out how much energy you'll be using now and how do we replace that with renewable energy. So if it's a question of just needing more resources, please let us know. There are lots of resources here. We have a coalition of about 15 nonprofits, including Sierra Cloud, Mountain True, 350 End invisible, that have come together to solve this problem. We have lots of resources to help you. If it's a question of money, which I heard at the last meeting, who's going to pay for this? It's a very valid question. Somebody's going to have to figure out where that money comes from. But that's not a question we need to ask before making the commitment. This is a serious enough situation that we need to figure out how to move that. We need to find where that money comes from. Early on in the process of figuring out how do we help with this situation? Early on in the process of figuring out how do we help with this situation, some of us called the CFO of Palo Alto. Palo Alto is a city in California that has already gone 100% renewable. And we called the CFO with exactly this question, like, how on earth did you guys do that? And we have a bunch of financial statements from them, which I'm sure we can share with you. And in talking to Lalo Perez on the phone, he, one of the things he told us was that they were seventeen years ahead of schedule. Seventeen years. When does that ever happen? We asked him, how on earth did you manage to do that? And his answer was, we couldn't afford not to. It made so much economic sense for that city to go 100% renewable that they just went for it. And then went well ahead of schedule. So we're here. Please, if there's more information or anything that we can give you, please research this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am. And then you can follow me. Next, sir.
Hi, my name is Susannah Park. I'm also a member of Asheville Community Roots. And I love you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being so smart. This is the best thing that I've seen happen for a while at any of these meetings. And it's going to happen more. This generation, younger folks, we're not going to sit by and let business as usual be business as usual. We actually employ you. The system is set up to make us feel disempowered and feel silenced. And there's a lot of fabulous leadership here in these rows and outside, thinking a lot of different ways. And you're the voice for us. But we also not always going to be nice. It's not always going to be comfortable. And it doesn't mean to be scary. It's just making any change is uncomfortable. And I think the US government specifically, we create these systems and then we get very comfortable in them. And we want to not make waves. And the environmental world is full of waves these days. And trying something different and being uncomfortable is normal for so many people. And so what do we get to do together? What is like, what is Asheville going to look like? We leave in so many amazing, interesting and creative ways already. And like, what else could we figure out? So I know for myself with Community Roots, with young people in this town, with people in all different parts of the mountains. I was born here. I love it here. And there's so much that we can do. And something that we don't know how to do isn't any reason to not do it. Because there's enough, as Kat was sharing, there's enough resource to figure anything out. We're incredibly complex and resourceful hunks of flesh and bone and everything. So the idea of saying, let's wait until it's figured out. You know, if something horrific happens to your family, you figure it out. You don't think, oh, well, just like let them keep bleeding out and sit here and try to figure out the best person to call or the most useful way I could approach solving this catastrophic hurt. And that's where we're at. We're at a catastrophic hurt on our environment. And what do we want to try? We should be trying as many different things as possible. And we're here to do it with you creatively, excitedly, noiseily. And we'll keep bringing waves and waves of people in here to beg, to plead, to, you know, entice, to just join us, see what's possible. Because Asheville could lead the way, not only here in these mountains, but across that beautiful country and across the world. Thank you, young.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And then who else? Who else? All right, you folks in the back, I'm going to start with the young man.
Hi, my name is Jamie Bridgert. I'm an Ashevilleian, I'm a county resident. And I also like to speak about the 100% renewable plan that was not voted in recently. And to hear that the reasoning for that was financial is just disappointing is an understatement and just kind of a nice way to say it. This is just so important. And it's important because we live and are members of a world that is incredibly beautiful and nourishing. And especially in this unique place that we live here in these mountains. It's overwhelming sometimes being outside with like the leaves peeking and the sun and like the river and the mountains. Like, how could we ask for a more enriching and nourishing place to call our home? And the earth provides for us what we need to live and to thrive. And we're, I think that it's pretty clear to everybody in this room that we're doing a really bad job of taking care of that gift that we have. And the situation now is getting pretty dire. We're losing hundreds of species every day across the world because of climate change. We've got unprecedented weather patterns, hurricanes, wildfires. So it's really scary. And it's really frustrating as someone that didn't set this system up, someone young enough that inherited this system and this destruction. So we have to do something. We have to do something immediately. And we have to act really boldly. Washington is definitely not going to fix this for us. Raleigh is not going to save us from this. The responsibility belongs to the people of every community, belongs to us and to you as our representatives and as our leaders. We need for you to stand up and to be brave. We live in a community full of people who are caring, who are innovative, who are creative, who are ready to bring their resources forward to figure this out. And I mean, don't tell us that the future is a financial burden. I mean, that's disgusting and it's wrong. We have to come together as the dynamic and innovative people that we are as Ashevilleans, as Americans and as world citizens to solve this problem. So I'm asking you to please be brave and be bold and... Are we all together? And to take action that really matters because it's too important. And I also wanted to just take my last five seconds to thank these young people being here and doing this because it matters a lot. Keep it up. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
My name is Theron Tegusa. And I'm here on behalf of RenewAVL. And I'm also a student at the University of North Carolina at Asheville. I want to speak this evening in support of 100% renewable energy for the future of Bunkin County. We have a great foundation built with the county's current energy reduction goals that would be useful in moving forward on 100% renewable energy. It is imperative that this important goal does not get put off any longer. And now we began the process towards achieving 100% renewable energy. Several of you at last month's commission meeting expressed concerns about the cost of renewable energy for Bunkin County. I hope that in your consideration of renewable energy that you learn about own bill financing, which is a financing option for renewable energy projects. In short, the cost of these projects is financed by the utility bills that are no longer needed since there is no cost for energy once the projects are installed and operating. The payback period for a 250 kilowatt wind turbine can be fifteen years, after which point the county stands to save money indefinitely by the free and abundant nature of renewable energy. I ask of you, when Chairman Newman's resolution regarding 100% renewable energy is revisited, to vote in favor of it for future generations. Thank you.
Peace and blessings. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you all tonight in regards to the vote that wasn't made last week. I mean, I'm sorry, last time that I was here. Tonight, I'm not going to speak as the apprentice for the Sierra Club. I'm going to speak as a single active mom that's been living in Asheville for seventeen years. I have a son who is in early college with Bunkin County Schools. And I have a daughter that goes to Evergreen Community Charter School. I have been a part of all different types of social justice movements and organizing here in Asheville and Bunkin County. And out of my seventeen years of organizing, when I was here the last time, I had never experienced such emotions and also disappointment with the vote that had happened. Our children deserve the right to live in an environment that is healthy for them and that is safe for them as well. And I really hope that during this work session that you all will be coming up to, coming or being a part of on the 14th of November, that you really pay attention and be mindful that there are generations behind you that has to have somewhere that's environmentally friendly and safe and that is sustainable for them to live in. And I think that with this 100% renewable clean energy, we will be leaving our children with something that they can work towards as well. Sorry, I had so much more that I wanted to say, but I'm not going to talk your ears off. Thank you for allowing this time.
Thank you for the peace and blessings. It was a good time to do that.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir. Who else hasn't spoken? Who's going to speak tonight? All right, you three, you'll start with you, sir. And then the two folks next to you. And anybody else? Mr. Rice, you can then, you can follow. If you've spoken previously, no one's going to speak twice. Very cool time.
Hello there.
Hey, good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ben Stockdale. I'm from western North Carolina. I'm currently a student at UNC Asheville and I'm representing RenewAVL tonight. At last month's commission meeting, we heard from several of you that you needed more time to learn about 100% renewable initiative and about what it would mean for the people of Bunkin County. Thank you for giving this initiative the serious and careful consideration that a transition like this requires. Here is what Bunkin County committing to renewable energy will mean for the citizens that have elected you. Renewable energy for Bunkin County will mean new, good-paying jobs for our citizens. Per the US Bureau of Labor Statistics, solar installers earn a median wage of $26 per hour. Renewable energy for Bunkin County will mean decreased rates of asthma, pneumonia, bronchitis, upper and lower respiratory issues, and lost workdays caused by the particulate matter that greenhouse gas emissions cause. Renewable energy from Bunkin County will mean lower rates for residential and commercial ratepayers. The cost of energy for residential ratepayers in Bunkin County this month will be 9.9 cents a kilowatt hour. On average, the cost of solar energy is 8.8 cents a kilowatt hour and continues to decrease as technology improves. We are guaranteed that this rate will decrease. And right now, it is already currently below the rate of traditional fossil fuel energy. That's something that is crucial to understand because even on day one, if we have some of these projects financed, the citizens could be paying a lower rate. Renewable energy is pragmatic for Bunkin County for economic, public health, and environmental reasons. Thank you, and I look forward to the next time the renewable energy initiative is brought into our body. I know you'll make the right decision and I know you have plenty of time to become informed about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Danielle Holtz. And I'm a sophomore at UNC Asheville, co-president of UNC Asheville's Environmental Club, and I'm also here on behalf of RenewAVL. Last month, this commission voted against the proposed 100% renewable energy resolution with promises to keep it in mind until the next vote. I'm here urging you to follow through on your desire to learn more about renewable energy for Bunkin County. I'm urging you to listen to the young people who speak for the future generations. Several of you are concerned with the cost of renewable energy for Bunkin County. But what I implore you to also consider is the cost of no action on renewable energy. The cost of no action is increased rates of respiratory diseases, lost workdays. The cost of no action is the risk of another coal ash spill, which would pollute our water. The cost of no action is the continued degradation of our planet. I'm here to urge you to make the right decision for the people in this room, outside of it, for the environment, and for the future of Bunkin County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula Ruback. And I'm a first-year student at UNC Asheville. I'm here today with RenewAVL. I speak on behalf of not only myself and the generation of young voters in saying that we support the proposed 100% renewable initiative. Because it's a requirement for the maintenance of our economy and our planet, as a student studying environmental science and a citizen who knows how to do scientific research, I can tell you there is nothing refuteable about climate science. Please take time to consider the beneficial implications of renewable energy for Bunkin County. We're counting on you to do your homework and make good decisions for the people who go to the office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rice and anyone else? All right, Mr. Rice will be our last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I love these kids here. That's our future here. Maybe not energy, but they're our future. I've been here so many years. You know, they call me the courthouse rat, me and Kathy. We've been here so long. I want to say something to you as commissioners. You're looking at a man that's had a commissioner, a chairman. Both cuss me and call me SOB in public and cuss me like a sailor and a reporter of Asheville Citizen Times standing there witnessing it and never does a thing. And the paper's got the article in it. You can go and look at it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your public way of doing public comment. This is what I want to show you. The grouse that you've got is the public here. You're here and your staff is here. You do what you need to do for your staff. But remember, the public speaking, regardless of how they might do their speaking, they're the public. There are right ways of doing this. You can be courteous to the public, even in a bad situation. So take this as a lesson tonight. Just like Mr. Chairman, he yielded to the one that's in the audience and he should have. I got thrown out of a meeting for saying some things that had nothing to do with a personal attack. So just remember that as a commissioner, you can do it in my way. You don't have to do it in public, even though I've been done it. I'm pretty going to tell the bird, I can take it. If I can dish it out, I can take it. So I love you in law. The best thing to do is figure out the right way to get it done. Now, transparency. Thank you, county manager and the commissioner, for putting the financial thing on to the county manager. This is the first time the county manager report has been on the agenda where we can actually read what we need to read before we get here. So thank you. The thing that I like about this is I can talk about it now. Might not have long because, you know, for these other things. But transparency, we need this budget. If you're going to talk about the budget, you're going to use the ten counties in the state of North Carolina. I want your figures of those counties, the population, the budget, and all the figures to go with it.
Time's up.
I'll be back on that. I figured it would be better than...
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. And if anyone's curious, the county commission chairman he's referring to was not me. I'm not sure which one it was, but I'm going to. All right, thanks everyone for participating in the conversation. We're going to move on to, we need approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Onto good news. I made a mistake earlier in the meeting. I asked Commissioner Joe Belter to do the proclamation on adoption awareness month. But I asked two different commissioners to do the congratulations to Rashida McGee. All right, so the next item is the proclamation of net member as adoption awareness month. And Commissioner Joe Belter will present the proclamation. And you're welcome to do it here or at the podium.
Kids don't leave the civics classes till continuing. Yeah, this is good news now. Y'all don't need to leave now.
So I get, I get just a great pleasure to be able to do this good news. I actually took a picture of this and sent it to my... and sent it to my son and my daughter-in-law because I haven't adopted grandson since I was two. But November the 10th, is what they call their gotcha day, which is when they get all the papers back. In three days, it's their gotcha day. And my grandson hates it. So it is, it is, it is very good news for, very well involved in it. Good news for me. Buncombe County proclamation of the member as adoption awareness month. Whereas adoption awareness month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas in North Carolina, last year, there were approximately over 16,000 children living away from their birth parents, 1,497 of these children were adopted. Whereas in Buncombe County, there are 300 children in foster care where adoption is primary permanency plan for approximately 125 kids. And of those 125, 40 are legally free and are waiting for a forever payment. And whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Human Services, private adoption agencies, faith community, and local advocacy groups will participate in a statewide public awareness campaign around adoption. This collaborative effort will focus greater attention on children who need permanent adopted families and honor families who have adopted children. Now therefore, will be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe's fathers that the month of November 2017 be proclaimed adoption awareness month in Buncombe County, that all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. Three, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Adopted this 7th day of November by Board Commissioners, signed by Ronnie Newman, Chairman, a reading on move this proclamation be adopted?
All right, we'll approve that by acclamation. Thank you, Commissioner Belter.
I just wanna say a few words. I'm Angie Garner, the Foster Care Program Manager. And I think hearing folks come up tonight for public comment, I'm gonna speak a little bit about, I think it's a little bit of a mismember that adoption is just with foster families. What the public doesn't hear unfortunately is all of our wonderful kinship homes that we are able to place these children into. Grandma, grandpa, aunts, and uncles, and cousins who take these children into their home or their parents realize that they're going through a really difficult time. And they place these children, choose to place these children with family members. And then these children come into care and were able to, through the court, sanction those homes. And a lot of times, those children are able to be adopted by their family members. And so last year, in Buncombe County, 62 children were adopted in the fiscal year. And some of those children were adopted by grandparents, cousins, aunts, and uncles due to the fact that parents were able to choose those families. We also do have foster families who do phenomenal shared parenting work with these biological parents. And due to the wonderful work that these foster families do with the biological parents, with involving them in their lives with their kids and inviting these moms and dads into their families, that sometimes these parents realize that they're unable to get to a place where they need to be to give their children a safe and stable home. And sometimes they choose to, for these foster parents to be a forever home for their children. It's called relinquishing their rights to these big parents. And these foster families, again, invite these biological families into their homes. These are open adoptions where we have parents who still have communication and contact with their children and are invited to birthday parties and to holiday gatherings. So I just think that's something important that the public needs to hear as well. But it's not just licensed foster families. People off the street who are licensing to be foster families. We do have family members. And when we license these foster parents, we really push and advocate very strong shared parenting with these biological parents as well. So it's, it's a shout out to those, to those families.
I wanted to say thank you. I know that due to one aspect of the opioid crisis, the huge amount of children, unprecedented kids in foster care. And I wanna thank you for all that you do. The presentation that HHS gave last week was very compelling. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and next up, Commissioner Jethan Beach-Mora will present next time.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On behalf of Buncombe County Commission, it's an honor to recognize the amazing work that you do in our community, Rashida McDaniels. I'm gonna share a few remarks to let folks know about the work you do. And then we also have a video to show tonight. Rashida McDaniels, who works here at the county, was recently recognized at an event sponsored by CoThink on October 21st called Becoming We: Strengthening Our Roots. This event was a celebration of leaders of color and allies that are doing innovative work to address the critical challenges facing communities of color in Asheville and western North Carolina. Rashida was celebrated for her role as an ally for Black and Brown communities. As many of you know, we are fortunate to have Rashida as a member of the county's Community Engagement Team. In this role, Rashida has been responsible for oversight of our community navigators. This program grew out of Rashida's commitment to listen and learn from residents of our community housing developments. From this input, Rashida built the Pop-Up Market Program and continues to support positive change in our community with her leadership as a liaison with the Isaac Coleman Investment Grants. If you know Rashida, you know for her, this work is also personal and that it is her vision to live into a community where every single member of our community has the ability to live to their full potential. As Rashida said in reference to community work, "It could be small in numbers, but you will make an impact so big in this community that no one will forget." I know I speak for all of us in expressing such deep appreciation. We don't just hear about it. We see you in action. And we know the incredible difference it makes. Let me just read from our formal statement here, and then we'll turn to the video. And if there's anything you wish to say. Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Rashida McDaniels. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation for your exceptional contributions to the citizens of Buncombe County. Your love for the community is reflected in your work and your volunteer service. We commend you on being named a community ally for your selflessness and contribution to the community. You are a true example of our motto, "People to match our names." And we mean that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I miss flowers sometimes. But I'm so thankful to work for such a wonderful county. And I take my job seriously. And I love the people that I work with every day. One of the most important mentors that has been to me is Lisa Eby. And I have another, another meeting next door. So I'm gonna keep this brief. But I just wanna say, thank you so much. It's just dear to my heart. And I'm just kinda off to work, so.
Can you stay for the video?
Yes.
Okay, good. Buncombe County's Rashida McDaniels was honored recently at the CoThink annual event, Becoming We: Strengthening Our Roots. She was named a community ally for her selflessness and commitment to this community.
So thank you to CoThink that I've won this great ally award. I'm very excited because I can continue to do the great work in this community. And I'm so blessed to work with the population of Buncombe County.
Rashida has worked for Buncombe County for 13 years. As a community specialist and member of our Community Engagement Team, she is committed to working side by side with community members to improve the health, safety, and well-being of Buncombe County. Thank you, Rashida, for being an example of the important role individuals can play in a widespread positive community change.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is we're going to hold a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the county personnel ordinance. And... Did you take my thing?
Yep.
Mike Frue and Lisa Eby will explain this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good evening. This is the first time under the new revised personnel policy that we're going through the motions of a required notice of public hearing. Notice of this change to the Personnel Ordinance was ran in the newspaper on October 25th, well within time to have this public hearing. And the purpose is, is just to clarify for purposes of longevity, what length of service and annual salary mean. Part of what we've been doing under your leadership since July 1st is to make sure that everybody understands that salary is not just your base salary. It also includes any benefits you have. Now, there's been a number of changes to what those benefits are. A number of them then are gone now. And any bonus would be limited to $1,000 involved for the commission. But also, as part of that salary, under the definition by statute, would be annual leave sales, for instance. So the change here we're asking the commission to approve is to make sure that for purposes of longevity, length of service, your time with the county, and annual salary is only your base salary. Nothing else included. Just your take-home base salary based on your position and classification as of December 1st of any year where longevity is paid.
All right, thank you. Lisa, anything else to add?
Just wanna underscore that this is our, another step that we're taking to be transparent and process to make sure that it's published.
Ma'am, go to Mike and say that.
Just making sure that the public has ample time to read the changes that we're making and to have the ability to comment on it.
Still can't hear, but yeah. I'm old, I can't hear.
Um, all I wanted to say is that we just wanna make sure that, again, this is another way that we're trying to be transparent with the community to make sure that there's public notice, that the public is clear about what changes are made, why they're made, and that they have an opportunity to comment on them. So again, just being transparent, that this is about ensuring that longevity is only on the base salary and nothing else.
And thank you, everyone, for the Herculean changes you've made in a very short time to not only this, but many other areas to give us more transparency.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:20. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed amendment? All right, seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:21. And I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Frue and Ms. Eby. All right, the next item is a report on Buncombe County's financial health. And Tim. Let me get situated here. And there's no, there will be no vote on this. This is an informational presentation.
Chairmen and commissioners, tonight I would like to provide you a financial update. My presentation is a broad, high-level look at our financial condition and how we operate from a fiscal perspective. Parts of it will also be used to inform and educate our staff and public in various other forms. So at times, it may seem a little basic. No offense to you is intended. It's merely our attempt to reach an broader audience. We are currently finishing up our audit. We are currently finishing up our financial audit. And here, within the next couple of weeks, we should get that finalized. And then within the next couple of months, I will be coming back to you with our auditors for a more in-depth look at our financial position. So tonight, we're gonna look at three areas: financial stability, financial outlook, and then some horizon issues we have out there. So this first section, financial stability, will be the part that I sort of will be taking on the road. And I apologize. One of the things I meant to do tonight was have a list of, have some cards over there where you can ask questions that we can get to later. But this is gonna be sort of a broad overview. But ultimately, what we'll do is we'll take this to the public. We will ask for input. And I will get back with any question that I get from the public or our staff and respond. And then we'll put those out as FAQs out on our website. So we'll start with financial stability and our financial cycle. Each year, a new budget is created and adopted, continuing the cycle of earnings, earning and spending. The financial cycle fuels everything the county does, like spending $75.3 million in education funding for things like textbooks and funding teacher supplemental pay, to spending $63.7 million for public ed, public safety activities like fueling our patrol cars and ambulances. To our biggest investment, paying employees' salaries, spending to the tune of nearly $130 million last year. All these activities rely on money being there when it is needed. So how do we know that our finances are healthy? To start, we should look at how well we work within our budget. At the end of last year, spending came in 4.5% under budget. So that was, we spent $299.5 million on the $313.6 million budget. So how does that look over time? For perspective, our spending has come in an average of 3.9% under budget for the past 10 years. This is an indicator of financial health and financial discipline. But what about the future? How do we know we have enough resources moving forward? Buncombe County keeps track of all its regular earnings and spending in the general fund. This is like the county's checking account. Money is constantly flowing in and going out. Last year, revenues came in over $300.5 million at the same time we spent $299.5 million. These cash flows are very different at any given time. For example, we had 9,000 deposits last year, but we wrote 68,000 checks. So just like trying to use a straw to drink directly from a spigot, having a reservoir to balance this out is crucial. More than 54% of our revenues are received in just three months. And those three months are November, December, and January. Any idea what that revenue is? Property taxes, that's right. So last year, we received $160 million in that period of time, which is about 90% of our total tax levy. Compared to revenues, spending is more evenly distributed throughout the year. The difference between the two creates cash flow gaps that must be balanced out. The way to balance that out is by using fund balance. The money that is available on hand and represented by the class is what we consider our available fund balance. By measuring this, we can see if our checking account balance is too low or even too high. And this is the common measure used by the state and others to gauge financial sufficiency. So, available fund balance is commonly measured as a percentage. This lets us compare year over year and also with other counties. The ratio of simple is just taking available fund balance, dividing it by the total expenditures, which will give us our percentage of available fund balance. The state requires us to have at least 8%. This is about one month worth of operating expense. The board's policy is to have at least 15% available fund balance, and this is about two months' worth of operating cost. This creates a financial buffer or a resource for us, and so not only does the buffer help us to level our cash flow, it's also a safe reserve, because a safe reserve is needed to keep critical services going even during emergencies or downturns in the economy. However, having too much reserve could mean unnecessary taxes being collected, and I've heard it clear for me that that is not what you want, and so maintaining balance is very important. So, how has this changed for Buncon County over time? Buncon County's available fund balance has been consistently between 17% and 21% since 2006. So, how did we do last year? Last year, we increased 1.4% to 18.8%. In total, we had $56 million in available fund balance, and while $56 million may seem like a big number, we have already allocated some of that amount for balancing next year's budget. Each year, Buncon County uses appropriated fund balance to balance next year's budget, always with the plan to save this amount instead of using it. And so, for fiscal year 2018, this year, we appropriated $15.4 million to balance our budget. So, how does this measure up with other counties? Buncon's available fund balance is lower than the average compared to the 10 largest NC counties. So, this year, we're at 18.8. The average of the top 10 counties is about 25%. Statewide, you'll see a pretty widespread. Between the 100 counties, you'll see that the lowest is 9%, all the way up to 65%. The spread is much smaller with our peer group, that being counties with populations over 200,000. And where do we fit? Our status, we are the lowest of our peer group, actually. And so, these numbers are 2016 numbers because we just finished it up this year, but we are the lowest, 17%, 17.38%, the highest is 34%, which is Methammon County. We are in good company. Wake County is, I think, 17.7%, so just right above us. So, we're on the lower end, but this is not necessarily a bad thing. We were able to do this because of a stable, diverse economy, a geographic location that is lower risk of natural disaster, and we have solid financial history. And from my perspective, I believe that we have the right balance. What are some other things that we monitor? So, the budget finance teams are always tracking financial indicators, policy adherence, projections, and every dollar we spend. And so, we have many financial indicators that we look at on a regular basis, and we really strive to adhere to our policies, our many, or we do strive to adhere to all of our policies: investments, debt policies, our fund balance policies. We also look at key financial indicators. These are just some of the things that we look at, not necessarily wanting you to read and understand those, but one thing I would like to point out is that they're all green checkmarks, because we believe that we fall within targeted parameters that we believe reflect financial stability. Another good indicator of financial stability is through our credit rating agencies, and in January of 2017, Moody's evaluated and upgraded us by giving us the highest credit rating possible, and that now gives us the highest credit rating, AAA ratings, from both of our credit agencies. And I will add that of the 652 North Carolina cities and counties, there are only 17 of those governments that have both AAA ratings from both of those agencies, which puts us in the top 3%. All of this, in my opinion, points to Buncon County having a solid financial position that will support our core services and priorities for our community now and in the future. So, that is the financial stability section that we will be taking on the road. Any questions before I move on to sort of this year's preliminary budget outlook?
Just a comment, I think it'd be good when you're showing where we rank from the percentages from 17% to 34%, that there's also the budgets of those counties, so there's some sort of comparison so that people understand.
Absolutely.
You know, what the size of budget of those counties are, because, you know, we probably are winning in those areas, but there's probably room for improvement as we look at the size of those budgets, and maybe even opportunities to adjust our thinking on the fund balance.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks. Great suggestion, thank you. So, looking at next year. So, next year, we have a budget of about $330-plus million, and if you just look at expenditures, evenly distributed, we've spent so far at the end of October, $105,000, $106 million. If you extrapolate that out and you look at averages over the last five years, roughly, we project that this year, we will end the budget here with expenditures of right around $316 million. I will say, this is really Q1 projections, almost at this point, this early in the ballgame, we're kind of spitballing it, but based upon the five-year trend of how we've spent things in the past, we sort of feel like that we're going to, we'll land somewhere around $316 million. Revenues are a little bit more difficult to project this early in the year, due mostly because property tax receipts are still outstanding and the variability of sales tax. But, again, a budget of a little over $330 million, to date, we've collected $65 million. If we look at, again, our budget variance averages based on the last five years, the early estimate of remaining revenues looks like that we think we'll bring in around $317 million. So, if you, again, if you look, the budget, $330 million, estimated expenditures, we anticipate landing somewhere around $316 million in expenditures with $317 million in revenue, which would give us $1 million in undistributed earnings for the end of the year. And so, that effect on our available fund balance projection for next year, actually, while you would think it would go up, actually, the available fund balance number, we are projecting to actually go down to between 17% and 18%. And a lot of that, again, is because of that formula where you have to divide the available fund balance by the size of the budget, so it's that denominator that is affecting that calculator. So, even though we may project an increase, the available fund balance percentage is projected could go down slightly. So, I've always had the goal to provide quarterly financial information, but never really the chance. And so, with the county manager's welcome emphasis on more open and available information, tonight, I would like to commit to you that moving forward, we will be providing you and the public with quarterly financial updates. It's my belief that these recurring updates will provide more useful information, will be better able to see how our projections improve from quarter to quarter, and ultimately provide you better information, because it is our belief that better information will lead to better decisions. So, this is something that I discussed with the budget departments, discussed with the county manager, something I'm kind of excited about, that we will be preparing quarterly updates, so we can look at the projections as we move forward through the year, so you have a better understanding. And so, I look forward to working with each of you over the next several weeks to sort of get your idea of what you specifically would like to see from a financial nature that we can incorporate in these updates. These will be updates as well that we will plan to publish on the website. And finally, some of the horizon issues that we're looking at. So, we're constantly looking at, looking what's out there, what threats we might have to our revenue streams, and so just want to share a few things that we're keeping our eye on. One issue, short-term issue, is PSAT funding, which is our Public Safety Answering Point. Currently, from our 911 board, we get about $1 million a year in reimbursements for our dispatch operation for infrastructure. They are looking at redefining the way we look at a dispatch center, and so there are potential threats of cutting our reimbursement by up to 2/3. We're not, at this point, overly concerned about that, but it is something on the horizon that we are wanting to take a look at and just make sure we're monitoring and working hard to take care of that. Classroom size mandates, certainly something that we are definitely interested in. Education spending in our operating fund really is 25% to 30% of our budget, so any changes the state may make in regards to that mandate will affect, could affect majorly that revenue stream, and that is the $75.3 million that we spent last year, that really is just operating. That's not to say that it potentially have on our capital funding as well. Long-term, we're looking at healthcare costs, post-employment benefits. We all know that healthcare costs continue to increase, and I will say that last year, we actually had a slight decrease in the claims. However, we are self-insured, and while we got a slight decrease last year, that was almost an anomaly. We are anticipating that being a trend, and considering the issues we have right now, continuing to go on with our New Cross Bushill Mission Hospital, we are certainly keeping an eye on where our healthcare costs will be going. Also, long-term, federal tax reform. Just this past week, we've got some new proposals out there. We won't go into detail on that, but there are a few things in there that could affect some of the debt financing that we do. One of the things is eliminating advanced refundings, which is our ability to refinance some of that debt, and so we actually were looking at some potential net present value savings of about $10 million on some refundings. If that law, if those laws pass, those reforms pass, that option is no longer available. And so, when I say $10 million net present value, that is, that equates to about $200,000 or $300,000 a year in savings. So, also, a part of our plans is to continue to promote our transparency. We want to continue developing new dashboards and informational tools. We have lots of ideas and lots of things in the hopper that we're trying to work up and get out there to the public. We are, we're in our third year of a three-year implementation of a new financial software system. The system we have now is 12, 13, 14, 15 years old, so there are many limitations with that system. We are looking forward to the new financial system. We think it's going to allow us to do a lot of other things. Also on the list, a meal to Mr. Yelton, we are still having an online checkbook in the works. This is something that we have been looking at for some time. The old financial software system. The old financial software system really didn't allow us to do it. There is a state law out there that requires us to do this. I will say, though, that most, all governments across the state are having troubles implementing this. There are some redaction and sensitivity issues with some information that is, we are not able to publish, and just the way some of those systems have been set up, it is just hard to get that stuff redacted before we get it out there. And so, even the state of North Carolina hasn't got there yet, but we are hopeful that within the next year or so, we are going to have something out there that will publish all of our checkbook activity. Also, plans, our plans are to be more accessible. We want to better communicate with our departments. We want to be more accessible, one-on-one availability with you, the Commissioners. I work for you, I need to be a resource for you. Me and my staff, we look forward to working with you and engaging with you to hear what your needs and your concerns are, to make sure that we can address those. And then, as well, providing you that quarterly financial update for the board and the public. And finally, as well, we want to engage in new ways. We feel like the finance department really wants to take a more active role in many of the programs we are currently working with, that the county is currently involved with. We want to provide more support for economic development. We want to advise and assist with capital projects. Finance is just not a once-and-done kind of thing. It is something that we should be involved in at the beginning, during, and at the end of a project process, so we really plan to engage more in those activities. And also, we also want to develop better ways around our education funding. Again, it's such a huge part of our funding, and sometimes I just feel like we don't give it the attention that it deserves. And finally, I want to just share some additional financial resources out there where you can continue to get more information. Like I said earlier, our annual financial report will be out, probably finalized within the next couple of weeks. I say it's going to be published probably within the month. I will say, there at the bottom, the public records site, publicrecords.bunconcounty.org, finreport, you can go to that site if you are ever interested. We have every audited financial statement since 1922 listed on that site, with the exceptions of, I believe it's 1936 and 1965. So, great information, great reading material. If there is anyone out there who might happen to have that 1936 or 1965 financial statement, I would really appreciate if you would pass that along to me. Want to also promote our transparency site, stuff that we're continuing to put things out there. We've got great information on the budget, our debts, salaries, the org charts, our capital projects, so welcome to visit that site. And finally, one of the other things I would like to highlight is the local government commission of the North Carolina State Treasurers Department has a fiscal analysis tool that is really useful for the public and for you, the board, where you can go, all of the information that we do from our financial statements has to be posted at, online, and so we have to submit information in a standardized format to the state. They take all of that information, and they have a giant database up there, and at any, you can go online and for any year, I think, I know it's been around, you can go back at least five years, I know that, but you can compare any government to another government, up to, I think, five governments at a time, but that is a really useful tool, so I really would encourage you to go and use that resource if possible. If you don't know how to use it and you need to sit and talk through how it works, I'm more than happy to sit with any constituent or any board member or anyone who would be interested in how to use that tool. And with that, that is the end of my presentation, and we would welcome any questions.
Another question, but just thank you for the thoroughness of this, and look forward to the end of our lectures.
I've just got a quick comment. The other day, you were actually able to see information that was provided by another municipality, another government, and we're continuing to look at this. I commend you for what you're doing. The transparency sites that the county is doing is amazing, they're looking at and refining them every day, making them more, you know, more friendly. I'm a pictures guy, you know, to stay on, you know, draws me into it, allows me to be able to go, makes it more friendly, more appealing to the eye, and I think, you know, you're doing a lot of that, and people are, people are going to be drawn to it, and those that want to find the information, I think are going to find it very easily accessible, but, you know, what the entire board, and I'm speaking for myself, but this board has asked of you and the county manager and others to provide access to the public, whatever they want, you know, from a budget standpoint and from these others, and you're doing that, and that's amazing, and I commend you for it, and I know you're going to continue to bring improvements to it, to make it easier for everybody to use it. Thank you.
You're committed to that, yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Florin. The item on the agenda is under new business. It's a consideration of a conservation easement project, and Devin Trumpin will share some additional information with us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Buncon County Agricultural Advisory Board recommended funding transaction costs for conservation easement on Martin Farm at the September 19th meeting. The requested funds have already been budgeted for an easement that cannot be completed, and we are simply asking to transfer funds from that project to the Martin Easement Project. The request is for $35,000 for transaction costs to complete the easement on 44 acres of farm and forest land. This property has been in the Martin family for 100 years. Ron and Ray Martin were raised on the property and have a love of the land that was passed down from their parents and grandparents. The property contains special native plants, and the Martins have been working to remove invasive species. The Martins are willing to donate the full value of the easement, estimated at $310,700, and are only asking that the county pay transaction costs. The $35,000 that's being requested for those costs has been allocated for transaction costs to complete an easement on the Tony Lewis Farm. Mr. Lewis passed away, and his family is no longer interested in moving forward with the easement. We're asking for approval to transfer the $35,000 from the Lewis Easement to Martin's. Happy to answer any questions to that at this point.
Any additional questions?
I have one. The $310,000, is that money they're going to receive for?
No, that's the value, estimated value of the easement itself, and they want to donate the full value. So, the way the value of an easement is determined is there are two appraisals. One appraisal is if the present use value is farmable, and the second is the... One appraisal is if the present use value is farmable, and the second is the value, market value, that we're a developable land. And the difference between those two appraisals is the easement value.
So, basically, what are we covering? Basically, the survey plus the paperwork.
Survey, attorney fees, appraisals, miscellaneous costs, or in most respects.
We're just moving money, we're not utilizing any of the money.
Exactly, we're not asking for any money.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. We will take public comment on the proposal. Mr. Yelton, you may. And then, Mr. Rice, you may.
This is one of the ones that I wouldn't make a comment on. And I want to stretch your brain just a little bit. By the way, take as long as you need, just don't get it done before I pass away, okay? Don't take 30 years to get there. Because I've been watching county commissioner meetings, and I just sit there and figured it out, 31 years, started in the old county courthouse. But I want you to think about something. I've watched millions of dollars be set aside for conservation easements. I happen to have 12 acres of land. Vacant land in Jupiter is extremely, extremely highly valued. And I don't have 34 acres or 100 acres. I have maybe nine acres that I could put in a land preservation. And Brownie, maybe we need to think up of a new category. Land preservation, because that land doesn't demand any police protection, it doesn't demand any cars on the road, it doesn't send any kids to school. So, my taxes should be almost nominal on that vacant land if I'm willing to leave it like that. And then, I would be more than glad for you to have the paperwork, that when I'm dead and gone, if somebody buys it or inherits it and decides they want to sell it and develop it, that you tax them on that sale for the taxes that I had not paid. Number one, you don't have to collect the money to create conservation easements. Number two, you open up a venue for a man to do four, five, six acres. 10 six-acre plots is what? 60 acres. You want to keep the quality of life in Bunkham good? You want to produce a good environment where there's oxygen in the air and green stuff producing oxygen? Folks, stretch your brain a little bit. That's the way to do it, and pass the cost on to the people who want to come to the beautiful area that us locals, the dying breed, created.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you're getting a good education now, isn't you? Okay. If you don't, I'm going to give you some more. One thing that concerns me, $35,000, 44 acres, that's a lot of money. Now, Chemtronics, I want to give you the heads up. I've been on that sport for two or three, about over three years now. The Chemtronics site is fixing to come to you for 500 acres to go into conservancy, okay? 500 out of 1,000 acres. So, I want you to think about this. $35,000 on 44 acres. Well, this is $1.3 million. The Chemtronics has been taxable at $8,825 a year. That's a lot of money that's going to come out of this county for somebody, okay? And they're not even going to let you walk across that property. You got it? It ain't going to be used for the public either. You got it? If you don't, you're going to get it, because I'm telling you the truth. Like, I don't video. If you don't believe me. Now, $8,824.95, that's a lot of money off of this piece of property out there. So, you've got to pay attention to what Don is talking about. There's a way of doing this to save some money. You might have to get the legislature, you might have to get somebody else to help you, but there's a way of doing this to save all this stuff that we're going through right now. And I think Don is on to a good thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution amending the rules and procedures for the Bunkham County Board of Commissioners. Mike Frue can comment on the proposed language.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just briefly, the idea proposed by a few commissioners was to amend the rules and procedures of this board to require that any three members of the board may add an agenda item rather than the chairman or any three members. And that's the substance of it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, Commissioner?
So, we're going to have a public comment?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
So, I'll make a motion for approval, and also say that the reason that this, I was one of the ones who brought this forward, is that in light of what we've seen in the last few months, as far as discussion of this current board, which has been more open than the previous board that I was on, I think everybody here will probably agree with that, and that there was concern that the county manager, the chairman, were allowed to put items on the agenda. The chairman could do that by his or herself. And that created, created a conflict between the relationship between the chairman and the county manager. By making it, and remember that when there was five commissioners, two, any two commissioners could put something on the agenda. And when the legislature changed it to a seven-member board with three districts, two per district, plus a chair, that went to three in the rules. So, that is not being changed. All that is being done is that the chairman would not have the authority to put something by his or herself on the agenda. And there are, there are advantages and disadvantages to that, I think, if you're sitting in the chair, chairperson's seat. I think there are more advantages to not being, being able to do that, because it does not put you in a position to where individuals or groups could put undue pressure on you. It returns the, the pressure's not the right word, but the responsibility to three commissioners to bring the conversation forward. Would not limit conversation, because anyone at any time can, during the discussion, can speak to matters. You've seen that, some of that tonight, so. And I think that there might be more, more discussion on my part, but I doubt it, but that's, that's the intent. It was brought forward, three commissioners, and I'll thank two commissioners to my, to my left, Ms. Frost and Mr. White, sign for, allow me to go on.
All right, so there's a motion, and there's a second. All right, I'll open it up to public comment. Mr. Warren first, Yelton second, and then, you're third.
First of all, I'd like to thank all those who have fought and died for this great country of ours, for they have protected and given us all the right, and secured our freedom of speech. If I may, how many commissioners have attended the commissioner's school? Mr. President, that's great. I would hope that your legal team would keep you abreast of the legal parameters of this board. The chairman, along with the county commissioner, sets this agenda, then, of course, the agenda can be approved or rejected by this board with a vote. Items can be added by the chairman alone, then may be voted up or down. The chairman, who's elected by the entire county, represents the entire county. Your commissioners are elected now, as we fought for for many years, by districts. You represent, you represent the concerns and the needs of the people of your district. Each district's concerns and needs may differ from other districts. So, here's what I believe, and I hope you can agree with me. Get the politics out of this. I sure don't agree with Brownie all the time. I believe that any one commissioner, any one, because that's the way it was done a long time ago, any one commissioner should have the right to introduce any item to the agenda. It would be up to the entire board to vote up or down on the introduced item. This is what I believe is the proper way a governing body works. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You know, I don't know why more people don't come. These meetings are fun. When I saw that in the agenda, my thoughts were this. The previously county manager was meeting with three in one party and three in another party. I think requiring three commissioners to agree smacks of politics. And I'm going to tell you, folks, I've been both a Democrat and Republican. Parties ain't going to solve the problem. And I think that it should be two commissioners, any two commissioners that wants to put an item on the agenda, it goes on the agenda. There's not three of you back there in the back saying you want this on the agenda. If two of you want it on the agenda, and Brownie, that includes you, all you got to do is convince one, same thing with the other. It gets put on the agenda, and it's debated right out here in front of we, the people. There's been too much going on back there, where these three get together and these three get together. That has got to stop. And Brownie, as long as you let the public comment on everything that's voted on, that needs to be added into your procedures. And I want to make a suggestion to you, because that means the people that want to comment on what's on the agenda, they've got to look at the agenda, right? And they know what they're talking about when they get here, right? And they know what they're going to say when they get here. And you make all public comment, wait till the last, and they have to sit here and see what you go through to make their comment, because they don't know when it's going to be made. I'm sick and tired of seeing this whole room filled, and the minute they run their mouth, out the door they go. Now, I've got to leave tonight for a couple of reasons. I'm deaf, and I haven't heard half what's been said tonight, because I've got a plugged-up head, and I got to take Mike home. So, I'm not leaving because I'm mad at you. I enjoy coming. And Brownie, you know, I've told you, keep letting the public speak on everything that's voted on, and change that in your agenda. You'll get out of here quicker, and you won't have to put up with all the crap you put up with.
My name's Daniel Brine again, and I'd inclined to basically agree with what these two guys just said, which is, you know, if you, or you, or you, or just one of you, at the most two, wants to bring something up, bring something up. Because I seem to remember, when was this? Oh, yeah, it was the last meeting, when you brought up the idea of cutting everybody's salary, and somebody, we won't mention who that is, said, "Oh, no, I can't have that done. I, I, it would be too much of a hardship, then quit." If it's too much of a hardship, quit. You know how much I've made, the most money I've ever made in my life? It was when I was teaching English in South Korea, and I made about 20 grand. Making what any of you makes would be a huge amount of money for me. So, I don't want to hear a sob story about poverty. And also, this is a little, sort of on this, but somebody also said, "Oh, I don't want to play the blame game." I do. I think that there is accountability that needs to be had. Now, who that is, let the chips fall where they may, you know? And it wasn't personal. It wasn't something I did just now, earlier, to insult anybody. I'm not under federal investigation. I haven't taken money. I haven't mismanaged your funds. That was somebody else, and you all need to get to the bottom of that. And I think, at the least, if you want to bring up, or any of you, want to bring up an item on the agenda, hey, knock yourself out. Let's do it. Let's have at it. When Gene Rainey was the chairman, that's what happened. I mean, even though Gene's a good friend of mine, you know, he and I disagreed about things occasionally, but it worked. It was effective. So, anyway, I'm running a little long here, so I'll let you all go, but I just wanted to say, you know, don't do this. Keep it to where one, or at most, two people can introduce something to the agenda, you know? That's, that's all I think is necessary.
I think it's unanimous, the public agrees that everyone should be allowed to put something on the agenda that wants to, because what you put on the agenda is based on input you get from the citizens, from the public. And you're putting a muzzle on us by limiting the number of board members to three that can agree on an agenda item. So, I, I concur with the rest of the public that has spoken tonight, that we do need to change that. And I would also like to ask you to add the general statute, the North Carolina state law, that establishes what your job is to your policies and procedures. It's not unusual to have general statutes in that policy manual, because you're an oversight board, and just like Mr. Rice said earlier, the top of that organization chart is the citizens, and then comes the commission underneath it, then the county commission, then the county manager whom you direct through your policies and procedures is next on that run. Nowhere does it say in that job description that you are to defend the people who work for you, as stated earlier by one of the commissioners. Your job is to defend the public, to protect the citizens, to ensure that your policies and procedures are working for the county and not for the citizens of the county, and not for your own benefit. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any, all right, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I agree with these folks, too, on how to get this thing to the table.
I've got plenty of video to show just how much time was spent in the back room for years, when it should have been out here. I would go a little farther and say, I want to thank you all for the transparency. I want to thank you for what you're already doing, because you've done a lot of good things. This is another piece, and you'll get through it. But we just need a way to talk, and I think Don has a good idea. I really do, having public comment lax, because a lot of people would leave before they got to the end of these sessions, me and him, they'd go. But I'm pretty tough. I want to say my piece sometime, and I'll wait for, if you want to wait on it, because I'm going to video it so everybody else can hear. I'm going to video it so everybody else can hear. People does need to hear this, and I know it's boring sometimes for y'all, but still, as a servant, you know, I'm serving. I help a lot of people, and I do a lot of things for people. And you know I don't get paid for it, but that's okay. I get a lot of credit for the right reasons, because that's what it ought to be about. But thanking you for what you've already done is the biggest thing for me, because I think we're going to get through this piece of it, because we do need to hear from the public, and I ain't all in the public here. So, I get up here four or five times, I'm still not the only one here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, back to the Commission, further discussion.
I have a question for, turn me through. Is there anything that we should be aware of in the general statutes that might impact the number of Commissioners who would be required to have an agenda item? I know we have, based on the cited statute, I know we have the ability to adopt our rules and procedures, but I just wonder if there's anything else you would flag?
No, not at all. I mean, that's the limit of it. I mean, it's based on Robert's rules, that's just loosely based, but the Commission, any Board can make rules to fit it. Really, the whole Robert's rules would be too cumbersome for a small body like this, but the rule is simply that the Board can make such rules that deems it in its best interest to govern.
All right, further discussion?
We, the people in here, I've been here going on five years, and it's, it has taken three Commissioners since there's been seven Commissioners able to put something on the agenda. And we have worked that the best we could. I put stuff on, other people put stuff on. And Joe was right with his presentation. If one person can just do it by itself, there's seven of us now, and yeah, we do have districts, and we do want to listen to people. But I don't mind being three of us doing it for the people in my district. I'll, I'll go find two more if it's, the idea's good to be able to do it with. That's why it doesn't, the three, that keeps things in perspective, in my eyes. I'm sorry, three, or one, or none, but it's been balanced to a point with three, because it was two, now it's three of us. You know, I can be beat up for what I said, but I am still going to defend, we hired this lady. And we're seven of us, as well as two, so, other than that, I'm comfortable with it just being three, because if it's worth doing, it's worth for three of us putting it forward. And that's the way I've looked at it for four years, and that's just the way I feel. Thanks for your time.
I also support this, because if you look at this, we got someone from District One, Two, and Three that brought this up. It wasn't three of one party or from one district, so, I totally support it too, with having District One, Two, Three all involved in this.
I'd like to say, to me, it doesn't have anything to do with individuals now, past. To me, it talks about the future and what we've, what we've been through, and we've seen, to touch on lighting, what happens with unilateral decisions. I think this gives protection and greater transparency going forward.
And I have one more thing to say before, you know, we do still have the three, three meeting, but it's not three Republicans and three Democrats. It is now where a Republican has to be in the room with the Democrats, and the Democrat has to be in the room with the Republicans. So, it's not like the County Manager's talking to the Democrats and then coming and talking to the Republicans. That's, that's, that deal is gone. I mean, you know, the transparency's working in that area too, so, I'm sorry that I had to jump back in, but I had to bring it forward.
And I agree too. I was one of the ones who sponsored this, for three to do this. And one of the things too, we need to clear up about districts. You know, maybe it's because I'm a new kid on the block, but I talk to maybe, on average, three or four constituents a day sometimes, but I never ask them what district they live in. And a lot of them, who are former customers of mine, don't live in District One, the district I represent. But I see it as, not only do I represent District One, I represent people of Buncon County. And I think all of us, that's what I like about working with the seven people who are here. We're different as night of the other six. We're as different as night and day in a lot of ways, but it's one thing that we all believe in, and that is representing the people of our county. And that's what I think is the most important part. And I don't see where it's a problem we have three of us to go along with it, because, you know, to put something on the table, I've gone along with some issues and I'm sort of lukewarm about them, but I do believe they need to be discussed, and we need to bring it before the people. And, you know, I, that's why I think we need the three rather than two or one. And let's face it, one got us in the situation that we're in now, so, I mean, we've got to be careful there. But I think when we talk about transparency, and let's do that, it's, the more we have involved with that, you know, and off we are, and it's not like that one or two of us only listen to the public. We all do.
I wanted to add to what Al said. You know, we do come from all different backgrounds. We look at things, you know, differently, and that's a good thing, but 100%, this Board cares about people whether they live in Sandybush, Marner's, or Episcopalview, and every single one of us. So, people can say districts, but we don't look at it as just representing one group of people.
All right, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Tax Department reorganization.
Sorry, you have to hear from me twice tonight.
Chairman, can we do five minutes while he's bringing that up?
Right.
Yes.
Take a five-minute break. All right, Mr. Flora.
Chairman and Commissioners.
Commissioner, let's, we're going to start meeting.
Chairman and Commissioners, back in July, you tasked me to do an evaluation of the Tax Department and returned to you with a plan by December. Over these past few months, I've been working closely with Keith Miller, who you then appointed as in our Tax Director. Tonight, I want to give Keith credit for the tremendous help he has provided as we work together on this evaluation and subsequent recommendation. Tonight, I briefly provide some background on the task we performed, our overall approach and conclusions, and finally, a recommendation for the approval and final appointments for the county's Assessor and County Tax Collector positions. Just off the background, as we all know, we have experienced many changes these past few months, and over this time period, County Manager Manny Stone has implemented a reorganization strategy based on these fundamental principles. And through our process, Keith and I wanted to ensure we aligned the Tax Department with these four values. So why are we doing an evaluation of all change now? After all, the Tax Department has had a track record of success. However, many changes have occurred recently. Gary Roberts, our Tax Director of many years, retired at the end of June. Our longtime Collections Manager retired a few weeks after that. We implemented two major software systems these past couple of years, and in addition, there's been a renewed focus on internal audit and avoiding potential conflicts. Because of these factors, Keith and I recognized a need to ensure future success of the Tax Department by establishing, by establishing an organizational framework that addresses the changing needs of our community. The approach we are taking is in three phases. Phase one, we wanted to take short-term actions to shore up our position and lay the foundation for phase two. Phase one is also what I believe was your intent for me in doing an evaluation and plan for the Tax Department. It is what we have mostly completed and will be the focus of our recommendations later. Phase two involves executing a long-term strategic plan as well as involving input from all Department staff. And phase three is taking the strategic plan and developing a framework of long-term performance and adapting our staff, processes, and technology for achieving success. These phases are not a once-and-done kind of process. Instead, this is a cyclical, ongoing process that we believe will lead to continuous improvement, where we are constantly planning, evaluating, and making organizational adjustments to meet the needs of our Board, county operations, and the needs of our constituents. Phase one came with some tough decisions about our organizational structure. What over the past several years has been a regular practice of having the Tax Assessor and Tax Collector consolidated under one tax administrator position, this has now fallen out of favor. Organizations like the North Carolina Department of Revenue and School of Government have recognized there could be potential conflicts with this arrangement. That is why we are seeing many urbans like Mecklenburg, Wake, and Orange Counties splitting their Tax Departments into two separate divisions. For Buncon County, the roles between Assessments and Collections have been blurred over the years. We feel like the time is right now to delineate these roles and to avoid potential future conflicts. In addition to the valuing real estate and personal property, we are recommending the Assessments Division would include Land Records Management and the administration of our extension programs. Collections would manage our billing and collections responsibilities. We believe this gives us better segregation of duties and will mitigate any future risks. During phase one, we advertised, interviewed, and ultimately hired a Collections Manager. Our intent was to find an applicant who would not only be a good fit for managing collections, but also who would sort of view our Board as an appointed collector. We wanted someone who could independently run the Collections Division, and who could also ensure a collaborative relationship with the Assessor and his division. We received over 40 applicants for this position, and after a rigorous interview process, found a candidate up for the job. Jennifer Pike is who we hired, and I will speak more about her background in a few minutes. In addition to hiring a Collections Manager, we worked on developing a leadership structure for the new division, one that reduced the number of direct reports to a reasonable number and formalized informal supervisory relationships. Ultimately, we believe this has helped better define career paths for our many Tax employees. We are currently in phase two. This has been exciting for me, as I've had, as I've had the chance to meet and brainstorm with all of the amazing talent in the Assessment and Collections Divisions. The staff have owned this process and are excited to play a role in shaping the future of their respective divisions. I want to give Keith and Jennifer credit as well for understanding the importance of this phase and what it means for the future success of the organization. We are being thoughtful during this strategic planning process, ensuring we are developing strong objectives, creating smart goals. By being smart about it, we are developing goals that are specific, that we can measure, that are achievable and relevant, and finally, that we can put a time period on. This process has challenged us, but we know we are developing better goals as a result. We are just now starting to move into the final phase, which is managing for performance. As the organization becomes more sophisticated, we do a better job of collecting, analyzing, and using information. This allows us to make better data-driven decisions, which ultimately improves our processes by providing better feedback and allowing us to adjust to changing needs, and perpetuating the entire cycle of planning, performing, measuring, and adjusting. Finally, I want to say thank you to the Board for assigning me the responsibility of evaluating the needs of the Tax Department. While I believe I am leaving the Tax Team in a better position for the future, I am also aware that this has had a positive impact on me as well. I've learned a lot. Most importantly, I've learned the Tax Team has strong leadership and an experienced, hard-working staff. I believe together, we have made positive contributions to this process and have identified ways to improve service to our community. And I believe the Assessment and Collections Management Teams have embraced the changes and will continue to move down the path of continuous improvement. Now, finally, I get to the recommendations. Tonight, I want to recommend that moving forward, we split the Tax Department into two divisions, Assessments and Collections. Further, I'm asking tonight that you appoint Keith Miller as the Tax Assessor and Jennifer Pike as the Tax Collector. Let's start with Keith. Keith is no stranger to you. He has served in many leadership roles in the Tax Department, and you have named him the interim Tax Director. I cannot say enough how impressed I've been with Keith's leadership through this transition. I again want to thank him for welcoming, welcoming me into the Department and helping me make the tough decisions to recommend splitting the one Department into two divisions. Keith is a pro, having over 21 years' experience in managing real estate assessment, land records, reappraisals, and property tax administration. He will serve the county well as the appointed Assessor. As well tonight, I'm asking that you appoint Jennifer Pike as the county's Tax Collector. You may not know Jennifer as well, but I look forward to you getting to know her better in the future. Jennifer is no stranger to the county. She has worked for Buncon County since 2000. I personally have had the privilege of working with her for most of my 10 years with the county. She's smart, trustworthy, and a hard worker, so much the hard worker that in the next few weeks, she will be completing her Masters of Public Affairs from Western Carolina University. While Jennifer may have fewer years' experience in tax, she does have many years of relevant collections experience, with many, many years involved in the Finance Department, managing collections for the Occupancy Tax Fund. As well, tonight with your appointments, you are also approving two new job classifications, and those position descriptions are attached in your packets. These positions are your appointments, so you will hear from Jennifer and Keith regularly throughout the year, as they direct, as they are a direct responsibility, as they have a direct responsibility to you, the Board. Administratively, however, they will fall under the leadership and supervision of county management. Because of, because of its financial nature, the Collections Division will fall under the leadership of the Chief Administration Office. However, because it is better to segregate these roles, the Assessment Division shall appropriately be located elsewhere within the organization. This is still to be determined as the County Manager continues to work on her broader organizational realignment. And now, before you take the vote and have a discussion, I want to give Keith and Jennifer the opportunity to say a few words, and we'll start with Keith.
Thank you, Tim, for those kind words. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, I first have to say something personally before I'll digress this to the moment from tax, because I thank you, Mr. Belcher, for the adoption awareness. What most of you, or probably none of you, know about me is I have two adopted children who both came from Handy Shop, and I can say I'm not good about all the years that I've worked with DSS, with Buncon County, for foster parent, and through the adoption process, and I'll thank you for that. So, a little bit of state and tax. You appointed me in July for, as the interim director, and I appreciate your confidence and your trust that you put in me to carry on that role as Gary left for retirement. I assured then the County Manager that this would continue on, that we would have no hiccups, the citizens would be served, this Board would be served, and I think we have found it to be true, that we have continued on, and things are, I think, great. Where are we at now, just a little bit for you? We're finishing up, of course, the reappraisal. We have, well, about 10 appeals from that reappraisal process to go to our Board Equaciones Review out of over 7,000. So, I credit a great staff, a great trained staff that's got us to that point, of working with our citizens to resolve those issues for them and get us to the point that we are at. Also, briefly, just on the collection side, since July, what we saw is that we successfully got over 130,000 bills to our citizens, not any hiccups there. We probably now are somewhere a little over 20% collected on that revenue that's out there for the county, and not to Tim putting pressure on us tonight with his presentation of what the, what the Collector's got to do for him, but we're happy to accept that, that challenge. of what the collector's got to do for him, but we're happy to accept that challenge. And I think Tim's right, we're at a good place for this transition tonight. I think we have clearly discussed the reasons of why this department should be split between an assessor and collector. You're aware of those. I think the department is in a great position for a new collector to step in and take over, and let me give that to Jennifer, that she can move on and do a great job for you. I appreciate again your confidence and your trust that you put in me. I do wish to continue to serve you in the capacity as an assessor, and also work closely with Mandy and her management team to make sure that we do the best for our citizens. Just a couple of brief little things for you. As I said, you have a very well-trained staff there, and you have a staff there who's very concerned about the citizens of Buncon County. And you know, that's the important part. You know, I stop them sometimes and I say, "Let's stop and think about why we're here." Okay? And I remind them of that sometimes in meetings that we have. Why are you here? We're here because of the citizens of Buncon County, and we're here to serve them, and we're here to collect the revenue tapes, to do the things that this board does for the citizens of our county, and that's what we need to remember. I think you would find that, if you were there every day in that department, you would see the compassion and empathy that we have for people and how we try and work with them. Just a couple of little quick things for you. When you first appointed me as interim director in July, I quickly had come on my desk in foreclosure, I was getting ready to go to the courthouse, and I looked at that and I said, "Something's not right." Okay? Because this shouldn't happen. Single elderly lady was getting ready to lose her home that we're going to sell on the courthouse steps, and I said, "I will intervene." So, I myself went to her house and knocked on her door and talked to her, and worked it out, and today she's still in her house. Okay? That's what happened for the citizen.
Yeah.
So, you know, just a few days ago, a citizen comes and says, "I want to meet with you for a few minutes." He and his wife, probably 70 years old, never in their life has ever been challenged with paying their taxes bill. He's sitting in front of me in tears saying, "You gotta help, you gotta help me figure out how to just get through the next few months that you're not going to force to like." He left there, shook my hand, said, "Thank you." His wife said, "Thank you." They both left in tears, stopped and asked, and we say a prayer with you and your staff before we leave. This is the kind of people that we serve, and this is what the job's all about. You know, I know that we have legal things that we have to go by every day, we have to do law, you know, law drives what we do every day, but with an assessor and a collector, what we can't forget is that compassion and empathy that we should have for our citizens to make sure that we do everything that we can to make this the best place that we can do. So, questions?
Just one thing, Keith. Just what you got through saying, older people coming in, and you give them help, especially the lady on the foreclosure, but she has other people. And that's what I've been trying to fight for since I've been here. The people of Buncon County, the older people, they want to keep what they have, but I do think the staff, your staff and the whole package that are helping them to be able to stay in their homes. I know they're having to make payments, but you know, we've got to figure something out. And one thing that I'm trying to work on with the state is get it where it's not a $29,000 deal, where they can take it up to 40,000, and then they can get half the rates on their homes. You know, I know there's 2,500 families of elderly people here that it's past them, and I thank you all for asking back to help them, so thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Chairman and Commissioner, I'm very appreciative of the opportunities that lie ahead of me and the challenges that will come. We have, as Tim mentioned, a track record of success, and there are several prime reasons for that. We have staff that is dedicated to what they do. We have over 80 years of experience among fewer than 12 employees. Not only that, but they understand the balance of their responsibilities. They're there to do a job, they're there to collect the taxes, but they also deliver the best customer service they can, and they deliver it in an understanding, respectful, and responsive way to our citizens. This goes a long way. We don't start the collection process when it's January 6th. We start that process when the bills go out. We're reaching out to citizens, we're trying to get them set up on a payment plan, we're working with them on their terms, and to try to prevent interest accrual or them being late. That's our goal, and that has served us very well, and that's something we will continue to do. We're always looking for ways to help the citizens get their taxes paid on time, and any additional methods we can offer. As Tim mentioned too, I'd like to step into, Tim mentioned we're heading into the busiest collection period, November, December, and January are when the bulk of the taxes come in. We want citizens to have a good experience when they come to see us. We welcome them to come see us, but I want them to come throughout those months, so start now, because we want them to have a good experience. I don't want them to wait in lines, I don't want them to experience parking shortages. So, if they will come on to see us, it will be a much pleasan- much more pleasant experience for them. Do you have any questions, Phil?
Congratulations, Ms. Michael.
Thank you very much.
I've got just a couple of comments for Tim, and one is, I do wish there was a lot of people in the room. You know, we have said to staff that, you know, you've done a good job on certain things, and a lot of that, you know, sometimes we've said too, maybe we've said too quickly without enough information, but great presentation tonight, very professionally done. I'm certainly proud of the information that I was able to receive tonight. I think it was delivered, I think we asked for certain things, it was delivered back. Also, sir, with Ms. Pike on the TDA, you know, she did a fantastic job there, but I will say this also for the others that come on that board, they love our financial people that come and provide the information. They do a really good job. So, there's been some things just when we throw out there in the future, you know, to think about, you know, how can we get people to pay their bills faster? Is there a way to level out that cash flow? Can we provide benefits to the taxpayers, you know, in saving money? Can we, there was a suggestion that was not a bad one tonight about, you know, different ways of looking at vacant property. Commissioner Friar, you know, brought something up tonight, and so as we move through the next year, you know, I don't like the term out of the box, but let's freely think on how we can truly benefit the citizens of Buncon County by reducing the stress associated. There's a lot of stress associated with this. We know that at home. And we're okay with the stress up here, but reducing it at the homeowner level, you know, we could, you know, there's a lot of ways that we could probably do that, so just challenge all of the free thinkers when it comes to, just because we haven't done it in the past doesn't mean we can't.
Absolutely.
Good job.
All right. We need to adopt two resolutions. All right, so is there a motion to support the resolution of appointing a tax collector? Someone say. Further discussion? I'm sorry, you are going to public comment on this end. Mr. Rehm.
Thank you, good chairman, members of the board. It's always good to be old, you know. I remember when the tax collector was elected, Mrs. Elizabeth Taylor, and she served us well, until a bunch of political commissioners got together and run her out of office, literally, run her out of office, put her on retirement. This is a shame and a disgrace. That's the accountability that we didn't have then. Now, appointed people, I have nothing wrong with Pike, and it's nothing, they're good people, but appointed, I do. No different than appointed school board members for the city. There's no accountability, none. The problem I have here is the school of government saying there's a potential conflict of interest. Where was the law back when they got rid of the tax collector, Mrs. Elizabeth Taylor? What was the law then and what has changed? I'd like for the attorney to update us here and give us some real information on why are we disappointed position now, again, instead of the political way of electing the tax collector, which would have been separate from the tax assessment. There was a lot of politics went on. I was right here videoing and talking to all these people at the time, and it was nasty and dirty. You think 2,500 was the limit today? You think how many people has lost their home and been destroyed in their lives, Mr. Friar? You just think about those people 20 years till now. Hope what has happened? And I appreciate you fighting for these 2,500, because I'm one of them. You got it? And I'm going to fight as long as I can stand. So, let's have the attorney answer the questions here. Why is it a conflict of interest now, but it wasn't before? Don't make sense, does it? A simple question here, it might make too complex tonight, you know. Attorneys don't like complex questions. So, anyway, I'd like to know what the conflict is. Could you get that answered first?
All right. There's a motion and a second further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our immediate motion to approve a resolution of appointing a tax assessor. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Great, thank you. Thank you to both of you for your service to the county. All right, we now come to the item that we added, which is a resolution accepting an offer to purchase county properties located at 125 South Lexington Avenue, and Michael Frue will share additional information about this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an add-on because I've been working with the proposed buyers for a couple of weeks, and it just gets complicated when, this is one of the few situations, we've used a real estate agent, and when they were doing preliminary negotiations, they didn't understand how we have to apply for statute. So, they're making an offer for the property. It's a market offer of $613,500, which matches the assessed value by the tax office. And so, to proceed with that, what we need to do by the general statute is to have a 5% deposit. So, they have signed a contract up there and sent the $30,750, which would be a 5% deposit for this purchase price, and what we need to do now, what an add, and we have to wait 10 days and afford anybody the opportunity to increase that bid. Because it is a market transaction, we doubt that it will occur, but we need to follow that loop, at which point we will sign the contract, and they hope to close this by December 18th. And so, that's the reason this is an add-on, so we couldn't get it, and we just got the stuff in the mail this morning, so happy that you could add it on here. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
All right, thank you. So, if we approve this, then we will start an upset bid process on this county property that's for sale. So, if anyone else is interested, there's a process that folks can, but they'd have to, they'd have to offer more than the current interested party.
Yes, it increases by at least 5%. At least 5%.
All right, but that'll be an open process. We'll run an ad in the paper inviting anyone else that's interested to come forward and submit a counter offer at least 5%.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
And 613 is market value?
Yes, it had been listed at a higher value years ago by the tax office. They adjusted it down, and it's been on the market for, I don't know, the better part of the year, so we're glad to get the offer. Thank you, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to support the resolution accepting an offer to purchase county property located at 125 South Lexington Avenue? Okay, and all in favor, public comment? Seeing none, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frue. All right, we've got a couple of board appointments. The first is to the Health and Human Services Board. This is the optometrist vacancy. We have two candidates, Stephen Satterfield and Jennifer Partlow. The HHS committee by statute is required to make a recommendation to the county commission on this specific position. They have, the executive committee recommends Jennifer Partlow, but it is a county commission decision.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Partlow.
Say.
All right, any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have one vacancy on the Civic Center Commission. We have one current applicant, Eric Burns.
Hold on, Eric Burns, and I'll thank him for assisting through the whole meeting.
All right, move the motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you for being willing to serve the Civic Center Commission. All right, we've got just a couple of announcements. November 9th, there will be an opioid town hall meeting at the Black Mountain Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., hosted by the District Two Commissioners. November 10th, county offices will be closed for Veterans Day, and on November 14th at 12:30 p.m., the county commission will hold a workshop here at 200 College Street on the first floor conference room in downtown Asheville. Is there any need for a closed session this evening? All right, all entertaining motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.